This meeting of the Romulus Board of Education is called to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Thede, could you please do roll? Mrs. Bowles?
Here.
Mrs. Crowell?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Mrs. Thunderberg?
Absent.
Excused.
Mrs. Beard?
Absent, excused.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Present.
Mr. Thede here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can't get used to this microphone. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, before we get into the approval of the agenda, just want to remind the audience, if you wish to address the board tonight, these forms are on the back table. We do require as part of board policy that these be filled out with your name and address. Please pass them up to the front of the room and we will make sure we call upon you during the public participation. Each participant will be allowed up to three minutes to speak and address the board. There will not be trading of minutes between speakers. With that, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support. It's been moved by Ms. Buckley, supported by Mr. Thede. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five and zero. Next item on the agenda is a review of bid proposals. I will turn the floor over to Dr. Daniels and to Ms. Popozaglu and they will discuss the proposals that are before us.
Good evening. Tonight, Mrs. Popozaglu is going to present the proposals that we have received for recommendation.
Good evening, Board members, community members. On July 8th, the district accepted bids for contracted services related to transportation and custodial and operations, including maintenance. Before you have two documents with a side-by-side analysis. This will provide you the details of the bid process, the results of the bid process, and there will be a recommendation on both items tonight for you. What you have in front of you in terms of transportation, does everybody have that document out? The district received four bids or proposals on this RFP. We narrowed the selection down to two vendors, and again, we'll be recommending one tonight. The recommendation is for Durham School Services. The other party that was considered was for student. We also experienced or received bids from Trinity Transportation, and it's escaping me on my fourth line.
Dean.
Dean Transportation. Those two again were ruled out due to not being costly, cost competitive, and one did not complete the bid process completely as required. So as you can see on the left-hand side of your document, you have an array of different facets of the bid. I'm going to go through each of those. Please ask me questions as we go along. I may refer to Durham Services. They are actually here tonight to answer questions from you. And I'm going to get started. Durham Services is located out of Illinois, but they have several districts that they serve in the state of Michigan. We required that they present a bid bond and insurance certificate as part of their bid. Both complied. Their local references would be West Bloomfield, Northville, Royal Oak, South Redford, Rochester, Birmingham, and Redford Union. They are currently doing business for transportation services in all of those districts. The next item detail will provide you with their annual cost, their bid proposal, and this is a base bid proposal. There are alternatives that we did ask for, and I will go through those with you as well. They gave a, the first column of the spreadsheet provides you with the information related to our costs in Romulus Community Schools for 1213. So as you see, in relation to this particular item, I'm giving you information that we're almost $2.9 million in expenditures in that program. One of the things that I wanted to note is that fuel purchases will continue to be part of the district, and I'll discuss that later. As you can see, in the first year, their bid pay, their base bid was $1,894,730. I did add, what will happen in terms of the district is there are buses that need to be repaired prior to a transition, if a transition is to occur. We've estimated an amount in there to make sure that those buses are up to state inspection standards. That's a requirement of both bidders. That is included in there. Moving on to year two, you can see that the expenditures are increasing, and you'll hear a little bit about that later. Year two, again, is $1.8 million. Year three, a little over $1.9 million. Year four, $2 million. And year five, again, a little over $2 million. The savings right now that I projected, based on what will, what is provided in this bid, is about $980,000. And that, again, is taking into consideration some of the costs that we'll retain, which are fuel costs, office costs, things of that nature, and again, to provide for the repair and maintenance of buses up until the transition, to get them up to state standards. We had some alternatives within the bid. We wanted to have an opportunity to look at different pieces of the bid. One of them was what would the cost be for year and for fi, year four and year five? I asked for a three-year proposal with information on costs for year four and year five. I've asked for information on the cost to lease buses from the district, if Durham were to lease our buses, and those are presented to you here as well. Over the course of five years, you'll see it down later in the presentation, but the cost commitment from Durham is to replace 10 buses over five years at 850, almost $852,000. That's an important piece to keep in mind here because we are talking predominantly about labor and relation, and benefits, but remember, we have a capital investment that we would have to make in the future to maintain our buses. And again, it's anywhere between 851, around $850,000. That is key. As you're thinking about this, and as you look at our budget transitions and the cuts that we would have to make in the future, that $850, or $850,000 over the next five years would have to come from some program. And basically, at this point in our budget process, those would have, those dollars would have to come from instructional programs, directly from the classroom. The next line item is we did ask them a cost to purchase the fleet from the district. And you can see that is equivalent to about $955,000. What that means is if we were to sell our fleet in such a transition, the district would receive $955,000. That's what our vehicles are worth at this point. I'm going to go down to alternate at number five, install video cameras on all buses. I'm not sure if you know or not, but most of the systems that we have in our buses now are very antiquated. They're VHS. I would say 90 to 95% of them do not work. They will provide a video surveillance system so that we can monitor student safety, which is key, on all buses, and that's included in the charge. Alternative number six provides for a performance bond. Basically, what that allows the district to do is add insurance on the performance of the contract and make sure that the contract and the specifications provided in the contract are followed by the vendor. Again, it adds extra protection. That's something that we can talk about in a little bit. Alternative number seven was to purchase fuel from the vendor. Again, I've already noted the fact that that will be a continued expense of the district. The reason why is because the district can purchase that even though we're not getting a bulk or a quantity discount, we do not pay tax on that fuel, and that's a savings to the district. So I wanted to make sure you're aware of that. Number eight was to remove the transportation supervisor from the bid, and both parties are not willing to do that. In this case, they want the entire operation of the transportation department. And to remove the part-time secretary from the bid, again, they will supply not only a supervisor of the department, they will supply a full-time dispatcher and a half-time dispatcher. The theory behind that is, at this point, we are looking to become as efficient as we can on our routes. We do have some work to do, and this will, this additional person will allow for the department to not only operate on a daily basis, but for them to continue to look at efficiencies within the departments in terms of routing and pickups and things of that nature. And then the last one was alternative number 10. What, you know, kind of discount would you give us if we removed mechanics from the bid? And again, they are looking for a complete solution for transportation, which is why there's no bid on either one of the vendors that you have in front of you. Now, I'm going to get into some of the comparisons in terms of the cost, in terms of the districts, district, as far as the supervisor and hourly wages in comparison to what's being offered in the proposal by Durham. And you can see the supervisor, they are willing to commit into the proposal to hire our current supervisor at the current rate. Again, I referenced on the replacement budget, replacement buses. Again, we do not have capital improvement unless we were to take those dollars out of instructional programs and move them into transportation. Again, that's just the value. You can see the wage per hour for a driver currently is $19.67 per hour. This proposal would allow for a $20.06 hourly wage for bus drivers. That is an increase of 36 cents. In addition to that, the next two years, there will be additional salary increases, something that the district could not put into our proposal. In terms of the driver aid, we currently-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Folks, before anybody gets emotional, please allow the presentation to continue so that everybody can hear the information. Thank you.
In terms of a driver, a special ed aide, currently, they are paying, being paid at the rate of $11.74. The rate proposed is $11.97 with the same caveat that increases will be applied in the next two years. In terms of the mechanic, we currently, we have two levels of mechanics. The head mechanic is at $25.03. This proposal ranges anywhere between $22.50 to $25.50. And in terms of the assistant mechanic, we currently pay $23.55, and that hourly wage being proposed is anywhere between $16 and $18. In terms of the dispatcher, we have a part-time dispatcher now, $19.94. The wage is right in line with that position at $19 to $21 per hour. And I put the part-time dispatcher just to show you that we currently do not have that position within our budget in the district, but that position would also warrant hourly rate. Insurance, as you know, the district right now is capped at a family maximum of $15,525. And Durham does offer a competitive healthcare solution. They provide $130 per month for the employee. Any additional insurance would be, cost would be borne by the employee. They offer a 401K plan for retirement purposes, up to a 4% match. And they're offering GPS systems. Zonar is the GPS systems that they would install on all of our buses. Again, getting back to efficiencies, this is one of the items that will allow the department to run as efficient as it can. It will also allow me the opportunity, if I need to address any billing concerns, it would be a backup for me to prove, for them to prove, yes, this route was actually in route for four hours. So it's advantageous on both sides. Again, we talked about cameras, no cost to the district. They said it's added in the budget. The value of that is almost $41,000. Again, something the district cannot invest in for the safety of our students while transporting them. And then the routing software, they can, they will continue to reuse our Resa Polyplot system. We receive that as part of a software package, along with financial, pupil accounting, and things of that nature. So that's an expense that is, is within a software package. We already have termination of contractors, a written provision, and if we do need to sever ties with this agreement, we have expedited days to do so. Inclement weather, there's 100% daily discount. Basically, what I'm telling you is on inclement weather days, there's no fee for transportation. Basically, we are not billed for those days. District discipline for students, they will follow and adhere to district policies and procedures as we have set forth now and we continue to monitor and update. And then signage on buses, the buses will be, remain to be Romulus Community School buses with our logo and name on them.
What happens when we use, if we happen to use one of their buses? It'd be a ma, magnetic sign that would be put on.
Yes, and what, the state requires to indicate on the bottom that which ones are owned by the district and then which ones are owned by the contractor. It's just a very small, but beyond that, the Beltline will say Romulus Community Schools.
Thank you.
In terms of reference checks, we have checked with all of the districts, not all of them, but the majority of the districts that I mentioned as local references. The references checked out fantastic in terms of Durham and the services they provide for the students, and we expect that that would be the same for Romulus Community Schools. In terms of, I know one of the questions that many people have is how does the, if there's a transition, how does the employee process and the hiring, how is that conducted? And it's always our intention that our employees be considered first in this transition. As you can see, they're offering a very competitive wage for this trade, and we feel that's attractive in terms of making sure that we hopefully retain most of our employees if this transition were to occur. Do you have any questions? I'm gonna, I asked Justin to speak, but I probably should introduce you. This is Justin Grayle.
Can you use the microphone, please, Justin?
Is it there?
Yeah, it's there. It's in the stand.
Yeah, I'm just seeing it on the desk.
You can just snap it right out of the stand if you want. I think the top, I think the top switch.
There's two switches.
There you go.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Justin Greigle, the Director of Business Development for Durham School Services, and I've been here in Michigan and working to help districts like yourselves explore this option for over five years. And along with me is our Region Manager Brad Tate and Lisa Mars, who is our Account Manager, who will be overseeing, both of them will be overseeing the operation and the relationship with your district as we move forward, and I'll be here to help transition that as well. So we appreciate the chance to be here, to answer questions for you. So please, there's no dumb question. Don't feel bad if you, you know, and if there's some, some question we can't answer, I certainly can get back with Sherry with an answer. And if you wanted to field questions from the audience, you know, we'd be happy to help answer those as well. So, you know, beyond that, you know, we'd be happy to explain anything that you have, you know, concerns over. I know that Sherry did a really good job of laying out the financials and some of the differences, but, you know, the key ones for us that were mentioned is just that we, you know, we want to make sure that we, and our goal is to, you know, have a meeting with your employees as soon as a decision is made, should you make one, to partner with us, to talk to them about employment with us and to begin the transition process for them. There's a compressed timeframe right now before the start of the school year, so there's some training and some background checks and credential things we're going to want them to go through. And all employees, even your district employees, will have to go through those checks, and it's just a policy that we have. So it'll be a redundancy because you already do some of those, but we need assurance of that. And so that is a step in the process that assures you that, you know, they, you know, everyone is screened. And as I mentioned, our goal is to, you know, our goal is to retain as many of your local employees as we can, and that's why we designed the package the way it is. And there's a very few instances where we turn an employee down from a district is if, you know, there's a, a background check that comes back, because our, our checks go beyond the state requirement. So that would be one place that we might have a resistance to hiring someone, but we will do an executive review with our company to make sure that it might not be something we can allow because they come with a reference from you. So those are the very few instances where we would not consider someone. The other is just if they didn't, you know, meet an interview. We do a very detailed screen interview process with them. But again, since they're working for you now and you have relations, we might be able to override that interview that went on. But it's the same process that we would apply to new hire candidates if we needed to find any replacements, and in those cases, we would not bend the rules for those individuals. But it's, it's important to us that we do a very good job of screening individuals to make sure that they're a right fit for working with students, working with administrators and families, and touching the community. And the other pieces, you know, the other key part is getting the right leadership here, and as Sherry mentioned, it's our goal to retain your director and seek out an individual to be the dispatcher to help with that, you know, operational piece, to look at the routing piece, which we understand is an, is an important thing to you, is that you want to make sure there's a good, looking under every stone to make sure that everything's running efficiently and effectively for you moving forward, knowing that, you know, it's important to you to do the right thing for the students to evaluate your system. And it's, and that's why we wanted to make sure we have that staff for you to do so. So, you know, again, please don't hesitate to ask anything. We're here for you.
I have one, or two. Go ahead, Mr. Thede. You talk about the hourly wage. The wage they have here, is that a top-out after so many years, or is that a starting wage?
Which wage are you referring to? The district's?
2006 for the Durham and in the first students?
It's not hurting.
Our, our intent, John, is that we, we, all your drivers currently now are at one rate at that 1974, and our intent, or 67, I'm sorry. We intend to give them all a raise when they return for the start of the school year for anyone who chose to return to us. And then we'd have a second rate for new hire drivers that would come from the outside if we had to replace any of your current employees, and that is at 1550 to start. And then the folks in your district that, you know, stayed with us would get annual raises. We give annual raises each year when they return for the start of the school year. So we just, you know, just do that easily every year at the beginning of the school year.
So, so, I don't know if I missed it, but what's the starting wage then for a driver going over?
Uh, the starting-
So it is 2006?
Yeah, 2006 for any of your current Romulus employees.
And what about like for their retirement, like, does any years carry over? If they had 13 years or 15 years, does that carry over their retirement, or they start over from brand new?
Well, we, we cannot, we, you know, the law doesn't allow us to contribute into the retirement system, so they're not eligible for retirement, but we do, or through us, but we do offer a 401K contribution of up to 4%. That's company match. So then the employee can contribute, I believe, up to 18% by the federal standard. So if they provide, I believe, up to 5% initially, then we provide 4. So it's 4% of their wages paid for on the, on behalf of the company. In regard to their retirement that they have accrued with you, they can defer that retirement and reopen that at a later date if they choose to, you know, go somewhere else and continue working in the school system. Or, you know, some employees that are retirement-eligible can retire with the system and then come work for us. So they're actually, you know, we're going to be able to take advantage of both benefits.
What about a seniority thing?
Yes.
If they had 15 years here, do they go in that company and there's a 12-year driver that are above them or under them?
Yeah, let me explain that. That was a very good question, and we didn't hit that here, is that our intent is to honor their seniority with the district for their route picking, for any assignments that they normally do, very similar to what they have in place now for, you know, picking a route, picking a trip, picking extra work for more hours. And so all we ask is that when we have that meeting to the employees is we ask for them to respond to us by a certain date. If it doesn't, commit them, just hey, we need your application by a certain date, we'll honor your seniority. Because our, our goal is to understand how many drivers are interested in joining us from your district, so then if there's a gap, we know we need to start recruiting and do an advertising or what have you for other people. And so this helps us make sure that everyone gets the fair shake, you know, to what they had before for routes, and it also helps you, I know a big concern is, you know, there's this perception, we're going to bring in drivers from Detroit or some other place, and your drivers, you know, the same faces you have aren't there. And so the employees will have the same opportunity to pick like they have now. And then for anyone new, if there's anyone like, like Sherry mentioned, we have a location in Northville and Redford Union and South Redford, if any of those individuals, you know, lived down in Romulus and wanted to transfer here, they would come in below your employees. So your employees would have the ranking like they have now in seniority order if they chose to come, come with us, and then if they chose, if anyone outside came, then they would come in under them for picking or any assignments.
I just want to add one thing that Justin didn't speak to, John, with regard to the retirement, because that was a question that was emailed from somebody else. If they're not, if they, if an employee chooses not to retire, or they're not eligible, they don't lose anything that they have in the MIPsers. They could either defer or, as Justin said, or they could extract that money out and reinvest it through the, through the 401K through Durham. So they're not losing the money, they're just not going to be further paying it. And another, while, while we were talking about that, another Board member asked about what different milestones there are. The district does not have that information based on each employee. That's housed through the state, through the OCR, the Office of Retirement. Yeah, OSR, ORS, Office of Retirement Service. And because there may be employees within this classification that may have bought years of service, or they may have paid into their bank, so to speak. So we don't have that information. That's between the employee and OSR. Did you have more questions, John? If you want to think about it some more, come on.
I do got a few statements I just don't know how to say it, or if it's pertinent to say, or, I mean, no disrespect to anybody, you know, from the companies or our staff. I know you guys have a job, and I'm not doing this for applause or nothing, I don't want that, because I'm trying to, you know, nauseate through this whole thing. When I look at the little savings of the first year and then the second year, and I'm thinking that this, on paper, could look like a good thing for the employees, because they're getting an hourly rate more, and they're still getting retirement, they get healthcare. But I'm saying, is it out of line, or why didn't we sit with these locals and explain all this and let them vote on it, kinda? And say, you know, this could be your future, this could be your new hourly rate, this could be your retirement, this could be your insurance, would you like this opportunity or not like this opportunity? And then if they said, yes, we want this opportunity, then it'd be a lot easier to make a decision like that. If they said, no, we don't want that opportunity, it makes things a lot easier on my end, too. But I didn't know if that's something, is that out of line? I mean-
Retirement part isn't optional.
No, but does anybody know what I'm trying to say? Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, as a whole, I mean, I mean, and no disrespect, because I've been through mergers, I've been through consolidations, I've been through this, and it's nauseating, it's sickening on my end when I've been through it. But I just wondered if it involves so many people, and on paper, I'm looking at what we're only saving in this year, and I know the long-run goal, but who knows if we'll be here in five years for the long run, because if we don't get the students. But we have so many plans, you know, like this early college and this employee, you know, we have employees always taking concessions, and, and I, and it really bugs me though when I hear people talk about trying to save their job, because if we're going to survive as a school system, we need to survive as a whole, we need to sync as a whole, and that means we have to fight for everybody's job. Administration, principals, teachers, and everybody, because you're just more than the next person, you know? And I don't want people to get beat up, you know, for suggestionist, because I understand their job. But, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, is that out of line to, you know, why don't we take this as a membership? I mean, in my job, if there's a merger, you know, our union's consulted about it, and we say, well, we want it or not, we're going to fight for it, or we're not going to fight for it. But it seems like, you know, are these benefit packages for real? And to me, I say, wow, if I can get a raise, this sounds good, you know? But there's no guarantee that I'm going to get a job, you know? That's the scary thing for me, that, you know, people who've been with us a while were not protected to a point. And I hear people say we need to cut from the top, and I think we have, but I, as a whole, and I don't want to make anybody mad on the board, I think there's a lot of things we can still do, because when I look at the buses, and here's another one that irks me, and I've had people complain about the free lunch or the free breakfast. The kids have to get to school at a certain time and they sit on the bus for 35 minutes because the free lunch or breakfast kids going to school, and they can't get to school so that bus is running, we're wasting fuel. So why don't we eat in the classroom at 9:00? And forget about bringing these kids early, that bus don't have to sit there for 40 minutes with diesel fuel at $4 to get out. You know what I'm saying? I think we need to revamp our way we work as a whole. There's, I think, bus routes and things like that. But that was just my question about, why didn't we bring this to employees, or is it wrong to bring it to the employees and say, this is what you offer, can you vote on it as a whole? And if it's like a majority thing, it's easy vote. You know what I'm saying? And I'm sorry if I put you on the spot, and, okay, I just, I can't, I consciously, I can't-
I understand. I understand what you're saying, and I know exactly where you're coming from. This particular area, this is a prohibited subject.
This, this particular item is a prohibited subject of bargaining. If we were to engage in a bargaining session such as you've described, prohibited subject simply means that we don't have to bargain it. We can choose to bargain it if we want to, but once we choose to engage in bargaining, it's all or nothing. It now takes it off of the board's table. We don't have, once we engage in a, in a bargaining agreement with them, or we engage in, in good-faith bargaining on this, we take away that prohibited subject. It's no longer prohibited, we have to bargain it. So if it didn't go our way, Mr. Thede- bargain it. So, if it didn't go our way, Mr. Reed, you wouldn't have any way to pull back and say, well, this is what we need to do in order for us to stay solvent, in order for us to continue to offer programs that we need. You wouldn't have that option anymore.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out how, how it's a bargaining tool, because if it was just something that went to employees, to me, I mean, like I said-
I can't bargain with employees, I have to, I can only bargain-
Well, it's not bargaining to me. I don't, I mean, where I work, it's happened to us, you know, merging with another city on my job. Well, they have to consult the union, and we say, well, we want to or we don't want to. Yeah, but it's still merging with another union facility. But, I'm just saying, I mean, I mean, and I have the option to say, wow, if I go to that department, I can make five more dollars an hour, but do I want to do that, you know, that retirement difference? So, that's just my question, you know-
Merk is pretty clear on this case, specifically for school districts and outsourcing of non-instructional support services. Pretty clear on that.
Any other questions, board members?
The questions I had, pretty much John asked, I had a checklist, and I had all of them out. So John asked a lot of the ones I had. I'm checking on-
We can't hear that.
I'm soft spoken anyway, but, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
The questions that I had, pretty much John had asked, most of the ones I had, I had a checklist. I was concerned about retaining of our employees, and that was answered. One thing I wanted to ask about was the healthcare. Can you explain that to me again, how that works here?
Yes, our, our plan is that we have three different plans that employees can choose from, and we provide a contribution that equals seventy percent of the employee portion of healthcare, for the highest level package we offer for the drivers. So that, we offer a hundred and thirty dollars a month as the dollar amount for that contribution. And so the employees can choose whatever they want. They, they don't necessarily have to take healthcare, if somebody has it through another source. We also have dental benefits and vision benefits, they can apply that dollar amount to, or they can take cash in lieu. So they can take, and just say, you know what, I don't want to have benefits, and I'll take the additional contribution and a payroll credit to them. So, and this is what we have in all of our locations in Southeast Michigan, that Sheri had mentioned. We have a similar plan that we roll out to all of them.
I don't see how you can buy insurance for a hundred and thirty dollars a month. So you're gonna, you're gonna provide seventy percent, and their thirty percent is a hundred and thirty dollars, is that what you're saying?
No, the seventy percent is a hundred and thirty dollars, so their portion is thirty percent. And, and, you know, I don't have the math in front of me on what their portion is, but it's a, it's a small, you know, it's a smaller contribution than the hundred and thirty, if that makes any sense. It's seventy percent, a hundred and thirty is a seventy percent portion, they even pick up the other thirty for the employee insurance.
You can't buy much insurance for a hundred and thirty dollars. Even a hundred and thirty dollars plus thirty percent, you can't buy insurance today, based on the premiums where I work. It would be only like a catastrophe policy.
It's a, it covers, there's a cap on hospitalization benefit, and there is, it's a preventative care insurance with a prescription drugs and co-pays for doctor visits and things like that. So that's what it covers.
I guess I would like to see what kind of medical insurance they're gonna have, and what their actual cost is gonna be.
And I can get back to Sheri on that.
All right.
Yes. I mean, and I guess, if you're interested in us providing different healthcare, there's an option where we could, you know, give you a revised, you know, cost estimate for a different insurance, if that's something you wanted, you know, to do.
And I guess, because of my age, I look at pensions. And I happen to know that, I have deferred comp, and pensions, the 401s are sort of like that, you pick high risk, moderate risk, low risk. But the reality is, you don't, you're not, the stocks are not doing well over a five and ten-year period, if you look at the comparisons. You're not gonna be able to retire and live on a 401K with ninety percent of your wages.
And that's a choice that the employee has to make, will help them with those choices. Yes?
I have a question. I was looking at your service proposal section.
Yes.
And I saw a statement, and it said, "We will offer jobs to current district transportation staff that are good standing with district and meet all criteria." So, I underline that part, "meet all criteria" at the time of transportation. What is all the criteria that it consists of? I know you just spoke about the background checks, but other than that, what other criteria are you doing versus what normal human resource department would actually do?
What we do is we do the FBI, Michigan State Police checks, that's the same that you do now. We do a, we do a background check through a third-party vendor that looks back ten years in residency and other states. So if this person, you know, moved here five years ago from California, we want to make sure there's not a record in California, because there's an occasion when the state police checks only are catching what's in the state. So we want to make sure there's no background issues beyond the state. And then, what we would do is evaluate those. If there's something that's an absolute no, we come to you and say, there's an absolute no. We would evaluate those things, and if there's something that we could talk to you about and make sure you're aware of, and make sure you would allow that, then we would, we would work with you on that if it's allowed. Beyond that, there is a driving history, we go back three years, driving history, there's no DWI or DUI for the past ten years, no moving violations, no major moving violations in the past three years. That would be offensive, that likely your drivers would not have on their record anyway. So, you know, speeding tickets and things like that are not considered major unless there's something, I want to say that, you know, it's a major, you know, thing, like a manslaughter thing, or something like that, it's a major issue. And felonies and those things that, you would come up through your BCI check as well.
Okay.
And then, we do an aptitude test interview process, that's, you know, to kind of evaluate, you know, their personality and how they would fit with delivering students. And I would not think that there would be any issues with your current employees, because you're, you know, you have a relationship with them. So if somebody came back with a test that didn't pass, we would talk to you and say, listen, there's an individual, this is what happened, this is what we went through, what is your recommendation? Because you've been, you know, they've been under your employ. But new hires, you know, we would not normally bend those rules.
So, but ultimately, it would still be your decision? And I just want to, just, I want to make sure I get it basic-
Yes.
-the basics of-
Yes.
-it would still basically be your decision, regardless of what we said?
Yes, that's correct, yes. But I mean, our goal, I mean, again, our goal is to hire as many of your employees as we can. We don't want to replace them, we want their, you know, them to be here, they have longevity here. In the past, you know, we've hired up to eighty, ninety percent of the legacy district employees at different locations. So, you know, that's, no, I don't know if that, you know, I just, we can't guarantee that, because if there's somebody with a background check issue, we need to, and sometimes they come up and your checks don't catch them, because they get checked, you know, they got checked a few years ago, and now it's something that came up, that you want to make sure is safe as well. Or if they don't pass a drug test, you know, or a physical, you know, that's an issue, you know, that we have to, you know, work through with you. And you wouldn't, and likely they would pass those things in the past with you anyway.
So is that pass, is that part that you're talking about, part of what you said earlier, the detailed screening?
Yes.
Part for each employee?
Yes, that, when you asked the question that was quoted, that, those are the different things.
Okay.
Moving violations, background checks, the physical and drug tests, and then that interview, we call it a structured interview. But, again, we would, if that, since they're your employees, we have, you have a relationship with them, so we would talk to you if there's any concerns. But, on a new hire driver that would come in, we would have an absolute no on something like a not failing, not passing this interview test.
So technically, what would you say? Would you just say, like, we don't think this person is a good fit for our company? Is that how you would say it to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we would go to, you know, your designated contact, if it's Sheri or Rebecca, and talk to them about the individual. And, we would ask for a reference check from you-
Okay.
-as well about the employee.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any further questions right now?
Can we come back to it if, uh?
We absolutely can come back to it, and just so that you know, you know, board members know what the process will be, the administration will be making a formal recommendation to us on Monday. There will be no action taken today. The administration will make a recommendation based on largely the information that you heard tonight and the discussion that we had here. Sheri, is there anything that we-
I have, no, you know, I just want to reiterate, you know, the district, I don't have to say it enough, the district is in a deficit status. Our deficit elimination plan is due July thirty-first. The state of Michigan, Michigan Department of Education, they want concrete evidence that districts are moving in the right direction. They want solid answers, they don't want what-ifs. And I just want you to keep that in mind as your decisions are made. And we still have a balance to budget, as you're aware of. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin, and the rest of your team for coming today on such short notice. I appreciate your availability.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and we thank you. And if there's, if you, I mean, we'll be here if there's more dialogue that, you know, if you wanted to engage us, if you had some comments to the public, if you wanted to do that, we can help answer those as well.
Thank you.
Do you want to proceed?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to proceed now with custodial and maintenance operations. You have the same type of document in front of you, relatively, almost the same. The bids were also accepted on Monday, July eighth. I had the opportunity this week to go through them. In this particular case, we're talking about custodial and maintenance services. We had five vendors bid. What you have in front of you are two vendors tonight, and the recommended vendor in front of you is DM Burr, they are also here tonight. I'm gonna go through the same process I did, it's a little bit more lengthier, due to a couple reasons, the staffing levels, we're gonna talk about staffing levels at each building. And, there are many different pay categories within this group, so I wanted to cover and give you that information as well. Do you all have the document in front of you? Ready to proceed?
Yep.
All right. So again, five vendors, down to two, recommended would be DM Burr, which is the second column. The first column, again, would be relative to information expenditures of Romulus Community Schools as they are currently for the twelve, thirteen year, or were. The, DM Burr is located out of Flint, they've been in the business for fifteen years or more. Again, the qualified, part of the qualified status for being able to bid was to provide a bid bond, and a certificate of insurance. Both were provided to us. They're able to start in September. Insurance certificate, I already went over that. Some of the local references for that particular company are Clarenceville, which is in Livonia area, River Rouge, and South Redford. If I missed any, let me know, in our general area. We'll go in, although it says Fleet, as you can see, I did a little copy and pasting when I put this together. This is just information relative to custodial and maintenance, so it has nothing to do with Fleet, so you can cross that off. You can see that the district's cost, looking at it from this year, was just a little shy of, a little over two million, three hundred and six thousand dollars. The proposal from DM Burr is one million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. And you can see what year two and three are at the same rate. Year four and year five, which was information we requested beyond a three-year contract, is what, which is what we asked the bidder to propose originally. They are to be negotiated typically, you see a three percent increase on year four, and then year five is what year four was. Again, that's continued to be negotiated, but that's typical of this company in doing business with school districts. The end result and savings for the district for this particular group is one million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand and twenty-nine dollars annually. And again, that is the first-year projection. Now I'll go through the alternatives, some of which are different, because we're talking about a different classification of employees, and they do different things relative to, for Romulus Community Schools. Alternative one, I already reviewed that with you, is what the proposal would look like if we signed a four and, a four and five-year contract. If the district proceeded, or thought it was advantageous to proceed with a performance bond, twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight additional cost to the district, I want to make that clear. That's a, that's a bond that we would pay for beyond what's provided in the base proposal, which I gave you a few minutes ago. We asked them for an alternative, number three, if the district were to continue to procure supplies and maintenance, maintenance supplies, what kind of discount would they give the district? So what I'm trying to say is that if we continue to do, make those purchases, how much less would the bid be? Because we assumed that they would take responsibility for that, and that's about three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. You know, we look at the buying power of an organization like this, who is dealing with districts, not only school districts, but businesses, they have a larger buying power than we do. Moving on to alternative number five, we asked for reduced costs of the supervisor and maintenance employees. That was not bid. DM Burr feels that in their best interest to make this program successful, that they maintain a relationship with the supervisor, as well as hire and possibly retain our maintenance employees. Again, supervisor, the whole operation will be going to the vendor, if the transition is to happen, they would be going to work for DM Burr. Number six, reduced cost of HVAC maintenance systems, forty-four thousand. Plumbing, same thing, forty-four thousand, and electrical. We wanted the opportunity to make sure that if we felt it was necessary to keep those duties as part of Romulus School District's responsibility, I asked for proposals on that. Again, my recommendation to you is to provide those services through the contract of DM Burr. General maintenance, same thing. And we asked them to provide us the reduced cost if we searched for a lawn maintenance and snow removal company on the district's own. Again, that would be a service that the district would hire with someone else to do, or a company to do. And again, they provided figures on that, anywhere between sixty-nine and seventy-nine thousand dollars. But again, the recommendation is for all of those positions to be included with the contract and the responsibility of DM Burr. Moving on to the second page.
All right, going back to the alternative five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Those numbers, if we're gonna maintain those services, we, are we deducting that price?
That would be a deduct from the base proposal.
Of the what figure, the one-
The one million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So if we were to maintain, so these, that, that base bid, that one million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand includes all of these positions?
So, so basically, if we decide to keep all of these, including the buying our supplies and all that stuff, so basically that's gonna take that figure of about six hundred and fifty thousand off that one, one-two-eight, so it's only six hundred some thousand savings.
Yeah.
And then, if we did this outsourcing, who would do the maintenance repairs, and if we give those people away? If we gotta do it, I don't-
No, 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 all of those services would be part of DM Burr's contract. So they would hire maintenance individuals, hopefully the same individuals that we have.
But you said if we kept those services, those would come off that main number?
Us.
Right. So if, that means that we're not gonna keep those people, we're gonna have to find someone to do the snow removal that, well, we would keep them-
Well, we could, we would keep them.
Oh.
And they would, and they would conduct the, you know, perform those duties. But under a Romulus Community Schools payroll.
But working for them?
No.
Okay.
No. This provides us the opportunity, if we wished to maintain the plumber, let's say, the plumbing position, if we wished to retain that as a district employee, that, that amount of money would come off that base proposal. We would obviously carry that onto our payroll, which would be an expense of ours.
Okay.
Okay? Where, I'm suggesting, as well as the rest of the administration, is those positions would be part of this contract with DM Burr. They would hire that person, and the supervisory responsibilities would be with DM Burr.
Okay.
Can we move on to the second page? All right. This page, the first half of the page provides you with staffing. I wanted to give you the opportunity to review current staffing levels. And when I say current staffing levels, how many positions are, does the district currently have in each of the buildings? And then I wanted to have you, give you an opportunity to review the proposed staffing that is part of this contract. Again, see, at each of the elementaries, we have two individuals, a daytime and a nighttime custodian. The proposal is for two point two-five individuals in those buildings. At the middle school, we have a total of four now. Their recommendation is, again, four. And I will tell you that they, they have, they had to be at a pre-mandatory meeting, bid meeting. They did tour our buildings, as well as, I failed to say, in the transportation side, they also were required to attend a pre-bid meeting. They were here, they inspected facilities, and they did a very thorough inspection of our buses. So I failed to mention that earlier, but I think that's important for you to know. Moving on to the high school, we currently have six individuals. They're providing seven point five individuals to service the high school needs for custodial services. Cory GSRP, no change, that individual will be two hours a day at that building. Admin and bus garage, same thing, no change, two hours of service. In terms of maintenance, we currently have four members slotted for that, those positions, and they're suggesting, again, four individuals. members slotted for that, those positions, and they're suggesting, again, four individuals. Our grounds technician is actually rolled into maintenance, just want to make that clear. In terms of supervisory positions, they're proposing a first shift manager and a second shift manager that are currently on DM, or with the DMR, DM Burr staff. Basically, they have an individual that would be responsible for, I think, this area, southeast Michigan, probably responsible for overseeing some of the districts that I mentioned in terms of local districts. And that person would kind of move around to make sure that things are moving in a direction. They will not be here on a daily basis during the day. Same thing with the second shift manager. Again, it's a DM staff, so we're not being billed for those. That is part of their management team, so that's not, those costs are not part of our proposal. And that individual, that second shift, is here to provide support to our evening custodial staff. Again, not on an everyday basis, but they do have somebody to get in contact with. Beyond that, they have an onsite supervisor, full-time. That individual is going to be here eight hours, and it's a flexible schedule. As a matter of fact, there will probably be more evening coverage than there is daytime coverage, to make sure that when the majority of our individuals are here working, that they have supervisory leadership to go to for answers and suggestions, and a good reference tool, resource tool. One of the things I'd like you to see or take a look at is total number of hours on an annual, or an hourly day, and the number of FTEs. That's the very last line in that summary information. We have 188 hours per day that's put into custodial operations by 23 and a half staff. This proposal provides 204 hours of services for custodial and 26 Moving down in terms of hourly rates, I provided you information related to all of the positions that we currently have, so that you could reference the proposed salary. I'm not sure if you want me to go through all of them. There's a very long laundry list. With the board's pleasure.
I don't think it's necessary, but if board members have specific questions, they can.
Hearing none at the present moment, I'm going to move on. Again, there is a benefit package offered. This is information that we got clarification on today, so if I misspeak, please make sure that you correct me. I believe it's $254 a month towards their employee insurance. Is that accurate, Tim?
That's what we're considering.
Okay. At this time, 401K plan is not offered. There is a provision for termination of contract. Employees do work on inclement weather days. They do go through the standard fingerprinting, background checks, and things of those, things of that nature, just like the district does. And one of the questions from HR was, you know, will they facilitate, we have a very lengthy process for reporting to the state of our personnel. And one of the things that they require is that we report these types of positions to, and they will be able to provide us with the documents we need to make sure that that report gets completed, just like any other employee or a person who lives in the district touching students' lives. And then, of course, we did their reference checks, South Redford, River Rouge, and Clarenceville, and all were positive. All reference checks were positive. Let's see here.
Did you want to introduce your representative?
Absolutely. Tim?
Do you have a question?
I'm Tim Dillon.
Use the microphone, please, Tim. Thank you. Might need to turn it on if people talk.
I did that without my glasses. How about that? My name is Tim Dillon. I'm a consultant for Educational Support Services for the DM Burr Group. With me tonight is John Allen, our chief operating officer. The DM Burr Group has been in, in business now for, knocking on, 16 years. I privatized my own district. I'm a retired assistant superintendent, 11 years ago now, I think it was, John, with DM Burr. Had nothing but, but positive results in my retirement. I've, I've now gone to work representing them. And we've opened successful programs all over the state. We currently serve 50 different school districts across the state. We provide custodial, obviously, maintenance, grounds, security. We have a complete mechanical division, which includes HVAC, plumbing, electrical on the, on the license side when, when a license is required. So we're a comprehensive facilities management company.
Any questions, board members?
One of the things I wanted to mention, too, in our RFP process, we were very specific about what our expectations are. If you get an opportunity and you'd like to look at it, I have many copies in the superintendent's office, but it details exactly what our expectations are in terms of how often we expect things to be done. If you're interested, go through that. It's a very lengthy list. Our expectations are very high. That's one thing I wanted to note.
Sherri, does that follow the same schedule that we're currently doing?
It's actually a little bit more enhanced. One of the things-
Why is that more enhanced?
Do you want to go into that? Enhanced, why these services are more enhanced than what we have, first of all?
I was implying to the number of man-hours.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. As you can see, we're moving from 188 hours annually to 204.
Right.
I'm sorry?
Okay.
The other item within the proposal that I did not touch on was DM Burr offers a preventative maintenance program, and it's included in their proposal. They basically have a, would you like to address that?
Sure, sure.
You can probably speak to it.
And I may ask for help from John at some point, too. What, what we offer is a free preventative maintenance program. And within that free preventative maintenance program, we provide all of the filters for your twice-annual changes. We provide all of the tune-ups on, on equipment. We replace any belts that need to be replaced, and, and you're not paying for, for any of those replacement belts or filters, which you probably have a fairly significant budget for, I would imagine, a few thousand dollars.
We have integrated equipment.
In exchange for providing that, and that is coordinated, by the way, by one of our licensed HVAC mechanics, and in this case, maybe two at a time with the size of the district, coordinated by those folks, not to say that custodians wouldn't be changing some of those filters, but it would be under the direction of, of those licensed folks. In exchange for that program that we provide free of charge, what we ask is preferred vendor status for any of those repairs under the state bid threshold throughout the school year, and at a reduced cost to what you're paying right now, I believe, for those services.
On an hourly basis, yes. The other item I wanted to mention, this proposal does include a suggested equipment list. I'll just randomly say, in terms of what's listed here as part of the proposal and in part of that base bid, are nine-floor scrubbers, four carpet spotters, extractors, all the way down to mowers and things of that nature. So, as you know, as I've been telling you over the course of the last several years, our equipment is aging, it's not working properly. I wanted to bring that to your attention. The dollar amount associated with that, that's built into the bid, is approximately $210,000 of investment. That investment is made on the forefront, if a transition were to occur and a contract were signed, but we pay it back in three years. So they're going to make the initial investment, and then the district would, part of the billing process would be that, you know, a third for each year.
And that's amortized at 0%?
That's right.
For you.
Again, an expense that otherwise would have to come from instructional programs, which is why we haven't been able to sustain the equipment to the level we need. Questions?
Question, board member?
My question was regarding the equipment you answered.
And again, board members, I know many of you have came in to look through these proposals, but again, they're, they're in the superintendent's office. At any time, please feel free to come and review if you still have more questions.
Is this the starting pay, sir?
Yes.
That you have listed down here?
Yes.
And how often do they get a raise?
Each year.
Each year?
Based on performance.
Can you describe how those hourly rates are determined, market?
Yeah. These, these are market rates through, throughout the field that, that our competitors are, are paying as well. And I will tell you that actually, we tend to average 50 cents to a dollar more per hour on those initial wages than, than our competition. And I think that's a fair statement, as I've seen bids across the state now, probably at least 200 of them over the last couple of years.
I just don't see how, how people are going to make a living off of this. I mean, I'm, I'm just being honest. I'm looking at the, the cut, and I just don't see how people are going to make a, a living off of this, especially with such a, happening in such a quick timeframe. People got bills, you know, I just, I just don't. From what I can see, I, I just don't see how you, how you're going to make a living off of this. The first one I saw here is $22.19, and you got listed down here $9 an hour. And you saying that your company normally is 50 cent more than a lot of other companies?
Yes.
Is that a bi-weekly paycheck?
Excuse me?
Is that a bi-weekly paycheck?
Are they paid bi-weekly?
Every week?
Yes.
And then?
No, I'm sorry. It's not bi-weekly. We pay twice a month. So it's 24 pays rather than 26.
So it's roughly bi-weekly. It's every two weeks, right?
It's two weeks per month.
Yeah, depending on the month, right.
Yep.
But, and then the insurance comes out of each check to make $254 a month, so that's split up along the-
No, that-
No, no, that's their contribution towards insurance.
Right. But that's, but that's going to have to come out of that paycheck.
No, that's the DM Burr's contribution.
Do you have an employee contribution?
The employee contribution would be approximately $100.
And the, and the district can choose any plan that you wish. So if you were to say you wanted 100% fund the insurance program, you can't do it. You can say, I want to do 70% of it. You can do that. It's, it's completely like an all-or-nothing plan, and you can choose as much or as little. You can contribute to the HFA, or you can contribute nothing to the HFA.
But does that change that figure?
Yeah.
Can you come up to the light?
Yes, it would.
Then so, so if that changes the figure right here, so what did you guys calculate that on? And what percentage are they employed? I mean, if you gave me this figure of 1,128,028, and what's, what's their contribution at what percentage? 100% funded by us, or you guys, or?
No, no. You're, you're funding 75% of the plan. The employee's funding about 25%, okay?
She's going to be a-
The way that it's presented. However, we can, we can do that at different levels. And, and obviously, if, if we provide it at a higher level, we're going to have to charge you more. There, again, I, I will tell you that we are just doing this as a pass-through, okay? So there's no markup, there's no handling fees, whatever the insurance costs, we pass that on. Right now, we have it formulated at 75, 25.
Okay, but if this is the figure that's in front of me tonight, this is the one that's going to be proposed. So, I mean, this is what's going to be, so what is the employee paying per check on this number?
About $50 per check.
Thank you. Is that 100? Well, he said 100 per month, so, well.
In regards, in regards to your question about pay, in South Redford, when we started doing business with them about two years ago, what?
Yeah.
Okay. The, what, what they actually ended up doing is, all the employees that we ended up hiring that worked for the district, they put them at a different wage scale. And if, if the district decides to do that, we definitely can. We gave you a standardized rate, and you can, you can change it at any way, any form you wish. And that's what they did. They had three different tiers in South Redford, so every employee that came back that used to work for the district were paid at a different rate than those that came in that were new employees, similar to what, what Durham is doing.
Any other questions from board members?
So what would be the approximate total cost for the, for the medical benefit?
The, the total cost that's incorporated in the proposal right now is $61,000, I believe it was. If you were to pay that 100%, say it's a, say it's another third, so it'd be $81,000.
No, I guess what I'm asking, per employee, what is, what is the cost of insurance?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The cost, the annual cost right now, the, the total cost is right in the area of $4,000, $4,100 per year, per employee.
But the employee would only be paying about $1,200?
Under this proposal.
Yes.
But they're only going to get coverage of approximately $4,000 a year?
That's for single coverage.
Right.
Put it in as what that is.
And that's, that's a priority health plan, which is well-recognized in, in this area.
Who's ahead?
Priority health.
Any further questions from board members?
I got everything. No, thank you.
Nope.
Oh, you know, I got one more. I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I look based on a 40-hour work week?
Yes.
Yes, the employee. All the employees would be hired and be full-time, with the exception of, there might be a, a half a person where we have to hire a four-hour shift, but the majority of the people, like 25 of them would be, twice as it would be full-time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He said that only one, approximately one out of the 26 proposed employees would be part-time. The rest would be full-time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we're now at the point of the agenda for communications and expressions from the public. If you've not filled out one of these forms, it's on the back table. I need you to do so and pass it up front. I'm taking these from the bottom of the stack, because as they've been coming in, they've been being placed on the top of the stack. Just let everybody understands what I'm doing. First one to speak is Tracy Wilson.
My name is Tracy Wilson. I was a resident of Romulus for 12 years. I was a student of Romulus Schools, and currently I am an employee. But I come before you as none of those. I'm coming before you as a person, representing all of the families in this room, their children, their spouses, their husbands, their sick family members, and asking that the board please consider allowing my unit, Local 64, to propose a concession proposal in order for us to meet or exceed the savings that are being suggested tonight. I'm just asking that you please consider our proposal as an alternate option, opposed to bringing in a strange company into this district to provide the support for our students that we have worked our entire lives supporting. And the wages may be competitive, but the insurance is not, and the employees are losing their pension. The maintenance staff is completely losing their pension, and there may be a 401K alternative, but it's nothing in comparison to what these people who have put 15 years of their lives in, plus expecting to get a monthly amount to support their family and their entire future. So my purpose is just asking that you please allow us the opportunity to present some concessions.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Becky Williams.
Good evening.
I just wanted to make a statement. On behalf of Local 64, I would like to advise the board that we have a proposal that we're, will save dollars and preserve jobs, that we are going to submit to you through the HR Director tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
We know. We know.
The next speaker is Pat Malloy.
My name is Pat Malloy. Most of you probably already know me. I, I'm the supervisor, garage supervisor up in the garage. And my first question is, Sherri just asked you guys if you wanted a copy of any of the bids that are in the superintendent's office. You don't have them in front of you? Any of the bids?
Oh, yeah, we don't.
Oh, you have them?
Not the entire proposal, no.
Okay. Well, I'm just wondering if you had the bids that these guys proposed to you, because there's a lot of hidden facts in there. You know, I mean, there's a lot of additional stuff that, if you look through them, that it's going to add up to bigger dollar figures. And the first thing here is Sherri said transportation savings was going to be about $980,000. That we can, our bargaining unit is prepared to come to you guys with a pretty substantial package. So on our short term, we also ask for a-
Salary and benefits?
From Sherri that we haven't seen yet. So, you know, we're, we're on- package, so, um, on our short term, we also ask for a, um, a...
Salary and benefits.
From Sherry that we haven't seen yet, so, you know, we're, we're on a short period of time, just like you guys are, and I wanna make sure that you guys are aware that we are trying to do this. This almost sounds like a done deal, but I know that it's not because you guys are ultimately gonna make the decision, so, um, I also wanted to, uh, just let you guys know that we submitted probably four or five weeks ago, maybe six, we submitted a written request to, um, have an executive session with all of you so we could get some points across to you without trying to, um, go behind anybody's back, and that was denied. So I want you to know that we did submit a written request to talk to you that was denied.
Mr. Malloy, just real quickly, that information that you requested yesterday, it was sent today to your union leadership.
Okay, but like after school hours, where?
At around three-thirty.
Okay, so we, we haven't seen it.
It was...
We, we haven't seen it.
It was requested about at four o'clock yesterday.
I know, okay. Um, let me see what else I had on here. Um, you gotta take in consideration too that we have a number of people that retired this year, one of them being a plumber, which is a pretty substantial wage as well, that I'm sure won't be replaced because our carpenter was never replaced, so that's another thing to take in consideration after you see our bid. And, um, you know, I wanna speak for Local Sixty-Four here because this all sounds good on paper, but what you guys got is a well-oiled machine that's running here right now with all your local residents, and I'm, you know, not to say anything bad about any contract companies and, but I have done some research on them as well and I'm prepared to, um, you know, at a later date, supply you with some of that information, but this is a well-oiled machine. These people here care about their jobs and you can't tell me that there's not gonna be a disruption if you bring a contract company in here and try and set it up and make it happen, you know, this quick, so, um, I basically just wanted to let you guys know that some of the things that, um, you guys are blind on some of the things that you're not getting all the information on, and we have some and we are gonna submit you guys a package tomorrow, and, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Craig Plank.
How you doing, Craig Plank? I grew up in Romulus. I was born in Romulus, I spent forty-nine years in Romulus. I'm standing before you in a city uniform because the Teamsters support Local Sixty-Four and their cause. I started schooling in Romulus over on Merriman Road, Merriman School, kindergarten. I enjoyed it so much, I done it twice. But, uh, I put, I, I, all of my brothers and sisters graduated from Romulus High School. I put all of my kids through Romulus schools. My last child graduated valedictorian. I am presently working on grandkids, getting them through Romulus schools. And I don't appreciate our school system, piecing our school system apart, one job at a time. You know, I love my school system. So does my children. Hopefully, my grandchildren will care for our, care for my school system, but when you folks sit up here and you wanna give all these jobs out, how many of these people are gonna stay in Romulus? You're shooting yourself in the foot because one person, if one person leaves Romulus, that's a tax base that you lost. You're shooting yourself in the foot. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bill Wadsworth.
Is it on?
Yes.
Um, I'll give you a quick statement, then I give a second statement. I've lived in this city since nineteen sixty-six. I come here as just a taxpayer. Uh, my three sons all attended the Romulus schools. My grandkids are now in the Romulus schools. Um, you're not gonna get the same people who dealt with my kids and my grandkids. You're not gonna find Betty Lenosik caring as much as she did. You're not gonna find Judy Fredericks caring as much as she did, or Joanne Prater, or Pat the mechanic, or, or the, um, retired supervisor, John Hadenack. This may not be the golden goose you think it is. It may not be the golden goose you think it is. You gotta think about these people in this room. They sleep here, a lot of them work here, and they care about this town. All these people here could put a, could put a for-sale sign in front of their house and like a lot of people have left the town. I think you're making a mistake. I think you're jumping the gun. I think you should go back to the table with the union and with the administrators and everybody else, and if we have to give a little more, that's, that's fine, but I'm gonna ask this board, Mrs. Bowles, Sandy, Cheryl, John, Bob, we all know each other from a different game out there, and you should think twice about what you're about to do. I don't think it's the right move. You're not gonna get the same quality of care that our kids got. I'm not gonna get a phone call at my house from Judy Fredericks telling me that my grandson, Andrew, didn't take his coat home. That's not gonna happen anymore. Or when, or when my oldest boy, John, who is now, God, he's forty-four, fell off a school bus when he was eight years old, and Betty Lenosik called us and took care of the problem. You're not gonna get the quality of work, and I don't mean it to mean any of you folks over here, I don't mean to be sarcastic with any of you, but please go back to the table and work something out.
The next speaker is Bill Rivard.
I'm going to, again, sit down. I've turned eighty-one years old now, and I think it's time that I got more active in my community here. Uh, I started, uh, teaching in fifty-seven, and, uh, I noticed that you're running for council. That was about, uh, seven years before you were born. So I do not bring, uh, I am not saying that I'm more intelligent than you or know more about what's happening, but I knew a lot about the historical significance that has transpired over these many years. I was very happy to see, uh, John speak up tonight because there is not much that I can say that the previous speakers have not, uh, said already. Uh, we are in a high transitional area. The clowns in Lansing don't know which way to go. They'll say, "Oh, more charter schools. Oh, we'll go into county-wide schools. We'll go into high-bred systems. We're going to eliminate this system and combine it with that system." So we are in a transitional period. I agree wholeheartedly with wait and see. Do not rush to judgment. Uh, when I first came to Romulus in seventy-eight, my daughter was going to the high school. I was, uh, a director of media and technology in the Taylor School Districts. I had the option of taking her to Taylor or leaving here in Romulus. Went to Romulus High School. I was approached by a security guard, escorted to the office. I knew that there was high security there. I saw one young man running down the hall as the bell rang and the door closed, and the principal said he just made it in in time. I was very happy that my daughter went to Romulus School. She is now a technician, an X-ray technician for the VA Hospital in Charleston, uh, Carolina, uh, South Carolina. You realize the decision that you make here are going to impact on these people. There's about a hundred and twenty-nine of them. Eighty percent of them live in Romulus. I worked in image-making, we talked about image-making during the last thing, and I'll be very honest, I have not seen the board working towards imaging. I said, "You must maintain the students you have and attract new students." I have not seen that coming from the board. I offered my services. During the last election, I noticed that the superintendent was taken out of the picture, the feat was put to the fire of the general public, and said, "We're going to drop sports and transportation." And who did you ask to help you? These people. And now you turn around and say, "Oh, by the way, we're eliminating your job." Don't rush to judgment. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ucal Finley. No?
There's people standing in the house, north of you, so...
I'll help if we go next one, if he comes in, we'll grab him. Or she? Is she?
Good night.
Thank you. Uh, next one is Julia Leskowitz.
Is it working?
Yeah.
I have two questions. One, to the transportation people, are you, did you provide transportation in Northville two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, or are you just starting there?
Can I answer that? We've been there now, this'll be our third year, so we started, uh, this year was our second year in Northville, and we'll be, you know, starting our third, so we started in eleven, twelve.
Okay, um, I just wanna know, I know that there are accidents and problems that happen with any groups of individuals, but was it your company that was involved when the junior high students were dropped off a mile away from their bus stop and had to walk home because a substitute driver was driving the bus and obviously couldn't cope with the kids?
Yes, it was our company, and we, we take a corrective action.
Okay, and, and for the other gentleman, for the maintenance, um, I understand you were administrator with the school district?
Yes.
I'm assuming you put in many dedicated years, and did you receive a pension?
Yes.
And you're enjoying it, are you, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay, I can speak as someone who is living now on a pension and disability and have health care from my husband's company, thank God. You cannot do this to these people. I'm sorry, you can't. Look at them, they are not all young people. They have put all of these years in. I used to work for Northwest Airlines. I understand how 401Ks work, and I understand how you lose all your money when the market goes bad. Um, you are all very hard-working people, and I think we need to remember, what is the name of this school district? The Romulus Community Schools. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I say, rather than putting people to the wall and saying, "You do it our way," or, "Goodbye, you have nothing," because a lot of people are, are right. People can leave, and a lot of people have left. We need to make this the best school district around so that we can attract the kids, so our FTEs are up, and we get the little per-pupil money that we need, and if we're going to be a small school district, then that's what we should be. We should be the best small school district. When I was on the board, we had a group health insurance that we did with other districts, and it saved a tremendous amount of money. We were already into a multi-district purchasing thing for our supplies, and, I mean, I, I just, I don't know, I said this the last time I'm here, I was here, you people never ask the community for input. There are a lot of people in this community who run businesses, who have run businesses, who will continue to run businesses. Everybody has ideas because everybody's in a position where they have to make cuts. And I just think that before you throw away all of these people, which is what you will do if you take their pensions and health care away, you need to stand back and look at every other opportunity. Because, like I say, are, are the administrators gonna lose their retirement? I don't know. I mean, I'm not being facetious, I'm just saying, I think that if you're gonna paint with a broad brush, then it has to be equality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sock McCray.
Yes, well, you all know me, I'm Sock McCray, working schools fifteen years, um, and, oh, the microphone ain't on? Okay, I'll see. Not fun. Is that me?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Hold it up close, Sock.
When these companies over here were talking to you about, uh, uh, you know, us being able to come to this company or what have you, and we could carry over with our, our retirement, maybe into a 401 or K or what have you, did they explain to you that when we pull our retirement like that, we lose the portion that the government has given to us, plus we incur a twenty percent tax cost on that? So you might've had your portion at twelve or thirteen, fourteen thousand, thinking, "I got twenty-four thousand, twenty-eight thousand," and really you're only getting eight thousand. I've lived it. Um, we looked at this, maintenance, hey, you know, we, we brought a guy in to do in-house repairs because we were, uh, pretty much going out-house over there, low here on, say, cost savings, but somehow we can't get no material for this gentleman to do his job on that because he's off on many different projects. And no, no disrespect, I mean, you got four guys, you know, we had one more in the beginning, but, you know, the, the whole idea failed. Was it a failed design? I don't know. But we have offered, we've made concessions, you know, we just want our jobs. We're good people. I grew up here, I don't live here now, my mom's right here, my wife here, my children went here, my mom and dad been here. You know, who's gonna sit at your football field at eleven o'clock at night when the lights go off? Everybody's gone. I don't charge you. I stay there with the kids that are waiting with their parents. You know, their, their parents sometimes aren't there on time. I ain't gonna leave ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen-year-old kids all alone in the dark. I put my truck in the corner and wait for them. I stay by them, make sure nothing happens to them. If they're gonna give you that quality, I'd really be surprised. So that's pretty much all I have to say is, give us a shot. We're good people, we're community people, and we want our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Sock. The next speaker is Charles Dudonis.
How's everybody doing? Name's Charles Dudonis. I've lived in Romulus thirty-six years. Uh, grandparents, mother and father, grew up here my whole life. I look around here, I see faces I've seen, um, on the buses, in schools, and it just breaks my heart that we're sitting here talking about throwing them out. You know, I was up at the state capitol when they were going to, with their right to work, and I've watched thousands upon thousands of people fight for their way of life. And to throw it away for a few pennies and not to get the quality of care that they're getting right now. You know, I'm a single dad in this city, and my daughter's ten years old right now, and she's going to Barth Elementary School. And the only reason that I'm able to go to work and have a peace of mind that my daughter's taken care of is because of people here. The bus drivers that will stop at your stop, spend ten minutes to talk to you about what's going on. Your daughter maybe looked a little sad today. She's kinda withdrawn, you know, things that you're not gonna get from outsiders or contract companies. It's, it's a generic service. You don't get the heart that you get from these people. And I'd just like to know, on this board and up there, how many of you guys live in Romulus? I mean...
Well, board members have to, yeah. We have to.
Administration, how many do you live in Romulus? So, I mean, it's not, it's not that I'm trying to pick on you or anything, but you can't possibly know what we know. You can't possibly have been through what we've been through and we stuck together. It's, it's, you're right, you know, and when it comes down to it, it's, it's a community that's sticking together. You wanna rebuild this, you wanna rebuild the school district? Let them rebuild your school district. Ask them how they're gonna bring in people, because right now, I tell you the truth, if you vote this and they privatize, my daughter will no longer attend your schools. Because my peace of mind, that bus that's gonna be taken care of, that's not gonna be some stranger on there that's, you know, doesn't care that there's thirty kids that they're, that, that they take care of. My daughter rides the bus for an hour and a half each day to wait at school and back. Now, to give somebody, a stranger, the responsibility of caring for our kids in that length of time each day, I don't take lightly. And it's something that I think you guys should really, really focus on, you know, and that's just, that's just how I feel about it, but there's only one other... But there's only one other question. You guys renewed administrations' contracts a couple of months ago?
Yes.
You did? Okay. And I hear a lot of people talking about how we need to cut, watch our bottom lines, you know? We need some cost-effective programs. We need to, you know, check ourselves. Were there raises given out?
No.
In those period of times?
No.
None whatsoever?
No.
No? Okay. Just concessions? Well, I've got some information off the internet, which basically shows a little different. I mean, I don't know. Maybe it's, you know, maybe it's a little bit of stuff I don't understand. But when there's numbers printed in front of me about last year's earnings and wages and compensation, and it goes up close to $10,000 prior to the concessions, and when they take their 10% concession, it comes down to their wage from last year, I don't consider that a pay cut. I consider that just complete fraud. You know, you sit here and you're trying to take the pennies versus what you make away from the residents. And, you know, I just, like you say, it breaks my heart that we're even at this point. Because I remember voting us for transportation in schools. And to, and to be six months later to do this. And I don't get any guarantees from these companies. I consider it a bait and switch. They're up here, they give you a good speech, they're going to tell you what you want to hear. But there's no guarantees on it. You're going to put, once they, once they get implemented in the school district, you'll never get them out. It's just like what we say under the unions. If you ever give it up, the things you fought for, you'll never get it back. So, they gave nice speeches. It looks pretty good. Well, let's take a look at our retirement. Let's look, take a look at what guarantees they give, and there's zero. So, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lynn Webb.
My name is Lynn Webb, and I'm a resident of Romulus. I've lived at 36654 McBride. I've lived here since I was nine-years-old. My husband's a lifer here. My three children are alumni, and we would hope that my grandchildren will be. Board members, I'm asking you to take a look at some of the proposals real quick, because you know what? We can say there's a line item. It's real easy for us to sit down and project, but can we get anything solid? If you look at the transportation department, for the bid, it's giving you a four-hour run. It's my understanding at this time, we have a minimum of 25 five-plus-hour runs. Now, when you look at that, because the price that they're going to charge you per hour over the four hours is, just one second, and I'll give that number to you, $28.54. $28.54 for one day for those 25 runs is going to give you $662.50. Now, they tell us that they're going to save us how much? $980,000 in savings? But for one hour per day for those 25 runs for the year, go ahead and add $119,250 to it. Look in between the lines here. That's the monetary part. The other part, thank you, Mrs. Leskowitz, when that you brought to the front in regards to concerns about transportation. When that these kids get on the bus in this community, they're my kids too. I've worked in this district. I will have 30 years, October 21st of this year. I have my 30, because I did buy my five. The thing is, though, when my next-door neighbor's child gets on that bus, when the across-the-street neighbor's kid gets on that bus, whose face will they see as a Local 64 person? Who's the last face that they see at the end of the day? Who's the person that turns on the light switches in the buildings? Who's the person that helps to provide the meals? I can go on and on, anywhere from emptying a trash can. It's Local 64 that's there for you. And as Sock said, those are the people that go, will go beyond. We go beyond without being asked. And I ask you to carefully, carefully consider a decision that, in the end result, every one of you, I look at you, because remember, I'm one that takes some votes too. And remember, this is a responsibility that's on you.
The next speaker is Carrie Vaughn.
Hello. My name is Carrie Vaughn. I grew up in Romulus. I graduated from Romulus. I'm a school bus driver for 17 years. What I want to show you tonight is, I just want to give you a glimpse of a day on a school bus. It's more than getting the students from point A to point B. I'm not up here tooting my own horn, but I want to show you what goes on in a day of a school bus driver. We have, as fellow employees and students, are... Let me start again. I want you to see the extra little things that we do for our fellow employees and students to begin their day good. My bus aide would always be here by 4:45 a.m. to walk in the door with Lynn Webb as she opened the building. He unlocked our back door. Then he would come over to the bus yard to make sure I was on my bus safely, because I was the first driver in. Just making sure that each one of us was safe at that time of the morning, because we were in the lot by ourselves, because we cared. It's about checking on my bus daily to make sure it's safe to go on the road to pick up our precious cargo. It's about driving safely in downpours, icy roads, snow, fog, rain, while we have 65 little miles behind us, all hollering for attention and wanting to be heard. Let me tell you, I did a lot of praying behind that school bus wheel. Many days, it was rough, but we gave you a good day's work, because we cared. When I first started driving, I ended up with a special ed route out of Barth. Linda Jackson was my bus aide. We laughed. We built relationships with these little ones and their parents. When we would take them home in the evening, they'd be so anxious, showing us their paperwork that they did for the day. Linda would always hold up the paper, and we would all ooh and ah over their paperwork, what they accomplished for that day. We encouraged them. We said, "Good job." And in return, we received a big smile from them, because we cared. I remember another first day of school one year, when we had a little one, so little she couldn't even get on the school bus. Mom and dad had to help her. They were having a hard time letting her go, but they had to trust us. As I looked back in my rearview mirror, I saw mom and dad hugging each other, crying, because they had to let her go. It got easier as days went on, because we showed them we cared. Then I began driving regular routes, regular ed routes, because of more hours. There were good days and bad days, but the good days far outweighed the bad. Many times, a student would hang back to be the last one off the bus, because they wanted to ask me about a situation or a problem that they were dealing with. I tried my best, with the Lord's help, to give them sound advice and encouragement that everything would be all right, because I cared. Many driver, many days, as drivers and aides, we get hit, punched, kicked, spit on, cleanup vomit, messes that they leave behind, cussed up one wall and down the other as we sat there and took it. But you know what? We were back the next day to do it all over again, because we cared. The last two years, I've been able to hold a special ed route. I drove into the Wayne Westland District. Let me tell you about an awesome aide that I had, Les Daley, that was knocked out of his maintenance position and was put into bus aiding. He didn't just sit on the bus, he built relationships with those kids and parents. We laughed, we teased, we had a great time with these kids. We transported Kenny Beard, and what a joy he was, and his family. He was always ready to get on the bus, and his parents were always there in the afternoon to receive him. We did our best to always be there on time every day, because we cared. We had five wheelchairs and three walk-ons on that route. We would always have to be aware of seizures, because many times, our students would have them. We watched them carefully. Many times, we had to pull off the road to make sure they were all right. I prayed that I would get safely to school or home to get them into the hands of someone that knew what to do, because we cared. Many of our students can't talk, and, but we learned to communicate with them by sounds and actions, talking about special ed. Let me tell you about Tyler, a high school boy in a wheelchair, and how in tune he was with my driving and the route. Even in the darkest of mornings, he knew exactly where I was, and he knew when I was getting close to a pickup. His arms would start flying in the air, he would start making noises and laughing. He knew I was close to picking up one of his friends. Another boy named Warren, that's in a wheelchair, and he can only hold his head to one side. We made sure he was in a position on that bus where he could interact with the other students, because we cared. 2012, 2013, my route changed again. Les and I stayed a team, and we drove into the Livonia Schools. We had 15 students on this bus. They were all walk-ons. Once again, we began to build relationships with these kids and their parents. We made sure, we told the parents how much we appreciated them having their son and daughter out there on time, and how much we appreciated them being there in the afternoon to receive them when we dropped them off. These students told us about their day, showed us their projects they made, showed us their papers. We clapped, we cheered, we encouraged them. We teased and we joked with them, and they got to the place where they teased and joked back with us, because they felt comfortable with us, because we were there every day, because we cared. I have a heart for special ed kids, because I had a special needs daughter. She would have been 41. At that time, there were no means for me to be able to keep her at home. I had to trust a facility to take care of my daughter, just as our Romulus parents have to trust us as drivers and aides. I appreciated those people who loved and cared for my daughter, just as the parents do us. So, I feel that in some small way, I'm giving back to the community that I grew up in and that I love, by transporting our special needs students that I care about, because I care. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Celeste Roscoe.
You know the drill.
Celeste Roscoe, 37011 Herman, Romulus. First of all, I understand that your positions are very difficult. I've sat on that side of the table, and budgets are hard to balance. But on the other hand, we're living in a, in a world now where safety cannot be changed for dollars. Security can't be given up to save a few dollars. It's not a few dollars, I understand, it's a lot of dollars. But on the other hand, growing up here, my children had some of the same bus drivers I had. My children had some of the same teachers I had, same custodians I had, and my grandchildren now do. And when you walk into a school, they know whether you're supposed to be there or not. And nowadays, that is number one to me, is security and keeping our kids safe, keeping everyone safe. And not only that, just like they said, 80% of these people here, they live here, they work here, they know my kids, they know my grandkids. The bus drivers that are picking up my grandkids, I know them. If I don't know their name, I know them by sight. I know that they, they're going to get my grandchildren to school safe, and they're going to get them back. But not only that, the custodians know who's supposed to be in them schools and who's not supposed to be in them schools. I don't care what you say, people walk in and out of them doors as people walk out that aren't supposed to be there sometimes, but they know who's supposed to be in them schools and who's not supposed to be there. And if you bring in outside companies, they're promising us the world, but I can tell you, I've had companies come, and they've guaranteed that they're going to hire Romulus people. They're going to hire Romulus people. Listen to me, they're going to hire Romulus people. When you go back a year or two later, you'd be lucky to find one Romulus person. And no offense to the people over here and what they're telling you, but I can guarantee they'll find reasons to eliminate most of these people that are working for your schools now by one little flaw here or one little flaw there. They'll find reasons to save that extra $5 an hour. They'll find reasons. And I'm here in support of my people, my community, the people that got out and worked to help pass these villages in the school, walked, talked to their friends, their family and everything else. And I, really upsets me that you're getting to this point, because it's a snowball effect. You sell our buses, we'll never be able to bring our own people back into the buses. We'll never be able to buy a whole fleet again. They'll be gone. We'll always have to outsource that. And I disagree with that. I, I just think it's, it's hard times. I know it's hard times. But they're saying, "We have concessions. We have alternatives. Let us talk to you." I think you owe it to them to sit down and talk to them and let them bring to you what they believe that they can live with, because they can't live with most of the stuff that you're, that these companies are proposing. We will lose our good community people that work in our schools. And I just ask you to please give them a chance. Please let them give you what they're proposing to save our community money, because in the long run, they're the ones that live here, we're the ones who live here. We pay taxes, we put our kids to school through here, we don't take our kids anywhere else. Our kids are here. That's where the state funding comes from, is from the kids that go to school here. You outsource everyone, it's going to get out there. People are going to, people that trust everyone that works in those schools, they're going to up and take their kids, and they're going to go somewhere else. It's going to be more, they're going to feel more secure, just, they're going to say, "Now I have a reason to leave. Before I didn't, now I do." So, all I ask is give them a chance, let them propose to you, let them see what they got. John, you understand. You understand. You understand what it's all about. They lose, they lose their unions, bottom line, they lose their unions, what are they going to get down the road? They will have nothing to negotiate with, they'll have nothing to grieve with when things are unfair, and you will not get the quality of work that you get now. These people, just like Carrie said. You know, she, she honestly cares about these kids. And these other people, I've seen custodians, I've seen security people stay late, just like Sock said, they stay late. I've seen bus drivers that bring kids back after functions at night, and they don't leave to, every one of them are picked up at the high school, the high school level. I've seen coaches leave, I've seen everybody else leave, I've seen bus drivers wait till everybody's picked up. And they don't have to do that. But what I'm asking today is to please reconsider what you're doing, reconsider the companies you're trying to bring in, because once you bring them in, it's going to be so hard to go back, and you're going to be so sorry. I really believe that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rebecca York.
Hi. My name is Rebecca York, but some of you might better remember me as Becky Alaskowitz, class of 1998 valedictorian. I went through the Romulus schools from kindergarten up, and I can tell you that one of the most- exciting days of my life, to this day, was my first day of kindergarten when my bus driver picked me up and I got to ride it for the very first time. I decided that day that I was going to be valedictorian, and yes, I knew how to spell it. Since I graduated, I've gone on to get both my bachelor's and my master's degree, and I currently work in clinical research. I'm working on a study right now to help bring the next generation of treatment for HIV to the market. Just to give you an idea of the quality of students, for those of you who are not Romulus residents, that we bring up here. Now, let me tell you, I owe my success to the care of these 129 people who stand before you humbly begging for the opportunity to protect their livelihood, not just their salaries, but their livelihood. And in fact, I think the math is kind of off on that. There's not just 129 lives at stake here. I'm one student who was affected by Sandy Tenney, by Judy Fedrick's, by Lynn Webb. One student. How many students are on one bus? How many buses are driven in one day? How many buses are driven over the course of one child's tenure in the Romulus schools? How many families are associated with that one student? How many friends are associated with that one family? I think if you did the math, I think you would find that you affect thousands and thousands of people. As a reminder, the administration cannot spend one dime. They cannot sign one contract without the approval of the board, and the board is employed at the pleasure of the community, the residents of this city. I am one of those residents, and I vote.
Thank you. That concludes our communications and expressions from the public. There is a need, board members, for an executive session for negotiations update. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we go into second session for purpose of negotiations update.
Support. It's been moved by Mrs. Buckley, supported by Mr. Thede. Mr. Thede, would you please do a roll call vote?
And can we just state that there'll be no action taken after?
Absolutely. There will be no action taken after the executive session.
Except adjournment, correct?
That's correct. Thank you. Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Ms. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Thede, yes. Thank you. We are in recess, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to go back into open session.
Mr. Chair, I motion that we come back into regular session.
Support. It's been moved by Mrs. Buckley, supported by Mr. Thede. Mr. Thede, would you do a roll vote, please?
Yes, at 8:30.
Ms. Bowles?
Yes.
Ms. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Thede, yes. Thank you, the motion carries. We are now in open session. If there is no further business, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Ms. Buckley, supported by Mr. Thede. For adjournment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned at 8:31. Thank you.